Ten oh one.
She read it, so we'll see.
Okay.
It said it's that she read it.
Okay, it's seven o'clock. I need approval of the tentative agenda.
Wish to approve the agenda for the special board meeting.
Second thought. All in favor?
Uh huh.
All eyes?
Yep, she said she's trying to connect right now.
Okay. Well, yeah. Uh. Something like, yep, so she just talked about, so wait for just one second while he allows her to. There she is. Ashley, can you hear us?
Uh, yes, I can.
Okay, good deal. We're just starting, they just approved the agenda.
Perfect.
So, uh, your, the item before you guys today is amendment number one or to the Wright County road use agreement. With Twin Rivers exploration, I have the document in front of you guys with the highlighted portions of the changes that were being discussed. We had Benny and I met with Twin Rivers yesterday, right? Yesterday morning and discussed some items and then we wanted to have Twin Rivers present. The, maybe the discussion that we had yesterday.
Yeah.
To, to the rest of the board. So they're, what they're wanting, uh, there's a possibility of, of some additional permit fee to this, uh, to this agreement. And then also to allow for testing within twenty-five feet of road structure. And also monitor all road, roadway structures and monitor PPV value for the structure shall not go over point five inches. Per second, so the point five PPV is what they're aiming at. So if they do, if they're within fifty feet of something and it goes above, they stop, they're done. So, but, um, I will let them kind of give what we talked about yesterday and then interject when you want, so. That's why we're here.
Yeah, I, I think we presented a few new pieces of information yesterday we went through, so. One of them was comparing the vibressize vehicle that we're using for the operation to. A, to a roller, to a vib- the name is, uh. I mean, just look, it's.
Yeah, vibratory roller.
Vibratory roller, thank you, yes. So vibratory roller is used for road construction, for asphalt work, um, it's been used in this county, it's been used in other counties where there's existing drain tile. Um, there are two main pieces of information about that roller that you can compare to our vehicle. The roller had a spec sheet with you guys, um, that roller, uh, able to put over thirty thousand pounds of force into the ground as it operates. If you compare the force that's put in the ground with our vehicle, ours operating at seventy percent is eighteen thousand. So it's a little higher than half of the force that puts in the ground. Uh, we. If you look at the spec sheet, it'll say twenty-six thousand, but that's, that would be if we operated at one hundred percent capacity. We do not operate at one hundred percent because that would destroy the vehicle over time, so for maintenance purposes, we operate at seventy percent, so that's how it gets to eighteen thousand.
Never operates above seventy percent, it's like running your car at some really high RPM all the time, this isn't a good thing, so we always keep it below, at a below seventy percent.
So that's one is just the force in the ground is significantly less from our operation. Uh, and that's at a single point on the ground, but if you have the roller and our machine, the roller is putting more in the ground than our machine. The second piece of information is around the peak particle velocity. Chris explained to me the other day in a way that I hadn't thought about, so when you're running these machines, if you're on gravel. You'll see the grains moving on the surface, right? That movement or shaking, that is a measurement of peak particle velocity, that actual moving back and forth, so inches per second, so imagine that little grain moving in inches per second, that's measurable by our devices. And so that movement under a vibratory roller is higher than the movement under our vibressized truck. It's not significantly higher, but it is higher, and so. That also shows that out of operating our standard operating procedure, we're putting less PPV in the ground than a vibratory roller as well. The other new piece of information we had is, uh, we, under the original permit, we provided an insurance COI that we specifically named Wright County. Uh, through Vantage, our operator's insurance, that was a five million dollar policy covering any damage related to our operations. Uh, Coloma, our parent company for Twin Rivers, also has an insurance policy where we've named Wright County, we provided that to Adam. So combined, and that's a six million dollar policy, so combined, we have eleven million insurance, uh, for property damage related to our operations. And then, uh, we discussed the, uh, a permit fee associated with permit itself. We recognize that through these discussions, there are tile that we don't know of. And even the GIS data sets that are available of the existing tile are not perfect. And so we would like to reduce the buffer, we recognize that this data is just not perfect, and so we're, uh, willing to discuss a permit fee. That as a payment to the county that can cover any types of damage, uh, or tile work in the future. So I think that's the majority of the new information that we talked about yesterday, and then of course, we're here to answer any questions. That you have, uh, I guess I should back up, sorry, so if we can approve this, um, our crews will be done about next week. Uh, with the current operation on the IDOT roads, we're, we would really like to have this, um, buffer reduction. As soon as possible, so that we can continue to operate in this county and your neighboring counties as well, to explore for the features that we're seeing. And ultimately, the more lines we have, the better picture we'll have of the subsurface and the higher the chances we will be able to drill a hydrogen well that has production. Uh, typically, what happens is if you, if we are able to see substantial results out of hydrogen in ground, leasing is the next step, and so we work with landowners. Uh, to lease their property, uh, we've worked with hundreds of landowners and. A little bit in this county, but mostly in Webster County. And so that can be a material benefit to landowners as the next step if we're able to see positive results. I miss anything?
Sounds good.
Yeah.
Pretty complete.
So, uh. Again, uh, the insurance thing.
Yeah.
And the burden of proof lies on the landowner or the county, uh, or the drainage district trustees. To prove that your operation caused the damage. That is, uh. That's a big barrier for me. In that insurance companies don't like to pay out, I mean, that's not what they're in the business for. And so how do you, how do you get around that?
As a starting point, you'll have a, a map with every vibration point we, we, every place we put the vibe and vibrated, so there's a starting point with every location we've done that. So, uh, you know, in, in terms of that demonstrating any kind of damages, I think that's a, a huge step in the right direction on saying. Here's where the damage is, here's where the vibe is, you know, I, I don't know exactly what the process is going to be with claims, we're working on that.
Okay, that was one of the questions I have right now is, was what was posed to you about, what the claim process? Were you able to get with the, an agent that said what the claim process is going to be?
I, I still don't have a response back.
We asked him for that, the details of how that claim process would go, I mean, this is not going to be a standard process, they're not going to say, here's the form for this, right? But, um, I think there's an opportunity to guide that and say, here's what we would expect or they would expect from this to make this. And I think a big step in the right direction for them, logic would be, here are the vibe points and here's where the damage is, right? I don't know what else we could do besides that.
I'd like to hear the insurance company's side of that conversation. Uh, I understand what you are presenting, but that doesn't represent the insurance company.
Yeah, for, uh, some sort of statement or, or email or something that says, here's the process. Yeah, would be beneficial, yeah, we'd ask to know.
So you, you guys already done work in Webster County, um, have there been any claims? And, and how long ago was that that you started there and this is my understanding, you're actually drilling over by Vincent, is that correct?
Yeah, we've been operating Iowa for about three years now, um, and we've drilled three wells in, um, around Benson area. And we, we collected a lot of information from those wells, uh, the last well we drilled was in the fall last year and was about just shy of ten thousand feet in the ground. And so we were able to take core samples of the earth, um, during that operation and run logs, which is basically kind of like a. I always think of like an X-ray of the earth around the well as we go down and do it. So we collected a lot of information and, uh, we have a team out of. Uh, OSU, uh, reviewing it, we have our own in-house geophysicists, geologists reviewing it, and so we are seeing. Results from that well that encourage us to continue to explore Iowa. Those wells are not, uh, you know, commercially flowing gas, if you were to go out there, you'd see a cap off the wellhead. Uh, but we are seeing results that encourage us to continue to explore.
So you've been operating in Webster County, when you say Iowa, is that Webster County specifically? I think that getting back to his question.
Yeah, so.
Has it been Webster County for three years?
Uh, no, we've, uh, we've been operating Webster and Carroll County, so our last bi- uh, geophysical survey was in Carroll County. Uh, so we use the same equipment that we're using here in and around the town of Litterdale. They have drain top in that area as well. And that was a successful operation.
There were no issue, no issues or claims or any issues with the local folks, it went very, very well.
Yeah, and, and so there's. There's a whole fairway between across Iowa, and so we, we've been leasing and engaging different people and towns along the way.
With no hydrogen.
So we have, we have hydrogen at high concentrations coming from rocks from these wells. The next thing we need to do is shoot a seismic survey that identifies a structure that looked like a geologic container for commercial levels of hydrogen. The rocks that you have right below this very building produce hydrogen at a fairly high rate, what you need, as you would in oil and gas, is you need a structure. That can contain it with good quality reservoir rock, we know that's here, so and a sealing lithology that will keep, put a cap on that. And that's all that's really missing from this system. So the hard part is a place that generates hydrogen, now we need to do the geology part and find that container, and that's what this, the definition of this seismic survey and the extent of the survey, that's what this is about.
Did you drill any wells in Carroll?
Yeah.
No wells in Carroll?
Yeah.
And what happened in Carroll is we were trying to identify a small structure there, we shot a seismic survey there and the structure didn't play out. That happened, though the structure here, we have much better evidence from a, a deeper. Survey that we've done, a gravity and magnetic survey that shows there's a big structure here.
And the seismic data those collected here.
Yes, and, and some of the old data shows parts of that structure and this is to better define that, so we can find the ideal location, the point of seismic is to drill. The best well and not to drill multiple wells, trying to explore what the well drilled it, but try to drill the best well first time, that's the, so we do this non-invasive processing.
So. In the previous meeting that I had with you and a fellow from, I forget what company he represented.
Same company.
Same company, okay. You had identified a specific area within Wright County that you felt very confident in.
I, I, it's hard to say very confident in the exploration space, but we, we have a certain amount of data today that is, that seems there is a structure in this county. And I think, and had the, you know, that we're looking at.
And so are we limiting, or this is carte blanche? Adam, this is a question for you, is this carte blanche for the entire county or is this in the specific area where we feel that there is?
They have to submit a map and I would have to essentially approve that map. For the routes that they want to test, so it's not across the entire county.
And it's not on, well, it's not on asphalt, it's not on concrete.
Yes. Yeah, still.
And two hundred and fifty feet away from bridges.
Yeah.
But I'm assuming that along the asphalt or the concrete, you could do it on the shoulder, uh, that's what they're doing on the DLK roads.
There's no shoulder big enough.
That's my issue is some of our, our shoulders are not large enough, like if they're wanting to do county K, maybe, but as you go C fifty-four, that's not, there's, I mean, there's two feet. You're not going to be able to put your pad on it.
C seventy?
I don't think they'd be able to do C seventy.
So now my question to you is, is, is that what you're requesting is the entire county or are you? You indicated an area in the Lincoln. Dayton. Iowa area. Um, is. Is that what you're wanting or you want to do every square inch at Wright County?
Not every square inch, no, no, uh, we, yeah, we have a targeted area, we're actually building that map now, um, redoing the maps. Uh, it's just a large task for us based on the conversation yesterday, so we've got someone doing that now. It should look somewhat similar to the original map that we proposed, um, when we very first had our discussions. Uh, so if you can try and generally describe that, if you use, there are an acre point, it would be north, northeast of here, east of here, south.
Belmont kind of being the northern extent of the area.
So, yeah, I think, uh, but we, but like Adam said, we, we fully intend to provide you a map of what that looks like.
And I will provide that to you as soon as I've reviewed it and.
Yeah.
Okay, so. In our discussion, we discussed, uh, some type of escrow account or something that. That didn't require the burden of proof with an insurance company, this doesn't mean that I'm not interested in that claims process with the insurance company. I'm just saying as a. As a gap measure that there would be funds made available that if we needed to do repairs, we could.
So part of this permanent, um, is a permit fee, um, and that is, that, that, that is not an escrow account, that is a, that is a payment. Of the county's time and administrative burden for, um, working on this project. So we, that, that is to me better than an escrow account because you don't have to make a claim or anything, that's, that's for the county's discretion regarding any tile work.
So yesterday and I, you know, they wanted to know a number and I threw out two hundred thousand. And, um, and so then they said, well, is that for Wright County or for the project? And so we discussed it to be for the project, for the whole. Uh, Hamilton County, Hardin, if they go into Webster, frankly, um, it'll be four hundred fifty, four hundred miles total.
Yeah, about four to five hundred miles.
Yeah.
Trying to perfect that right now.
Right, and so, and of that approximately three hundred miles of it is in Wright County. So that would give.
So approximately eighty thousand for a permit fee for, um.
Well, and if you did the math, if it was two hundred thousand.
Two hundred thousand.
Yeah, so.
These numbers are kind of budgety, so we, we're trying to perfect the map now and then we can actually have realistic proportions, um, soon. For that, yeah, but that would give you a rough idea of, of, um.
Let's say it's eighty thousand, that would be Wright County's portion.
Yes.
That if something did come up, we could use for tile damage, whatever.
And it would be yours to use however you saw fit, if there weren't damages, that's probably be something we paid for you in terms of.
For your time.
Yeah.
Working with them.
Yeah, our time with Adam and his crews had to do.
Yeah.
Cause that was one of the things, you know, as we were discussing different stuff is, you know, you said that you were going to get ahold of them when they get to working on the secondary roads. Rattles, there was no communication, there, and that, that's kind of chasing that, I mean, then you're trying to chase your tail because all of a sudden your. Things are getting.
Yeah.
Miscommunication and it was kind of a bad start.
I agree, I think we, we do need to have better communication with the county, I, I think our teams were just really focused on IDOT since that was the majority of this operation. Um, and so we, we're already working on a daily report that can go to the county, that will include all the county engineers, uh, for our daily operations. I don't want to promise this, but we apparently have like a web map type feature that could be accessible, so you could have kind of real-time information about what we're doing, you know, where we're operating. Uh, so we, we, we want to have that, uh, available for the counties and, you know, I think it's.
One way or the other, we'll talk about what we're doing today, what we've done, what we're doing today and what we're going to do for the next five days, that's typically how we have to plan things, and Adam will have that update every day. Yeah, I mean, it was, it was not a good start and it was, some of us were busy doing some other things and now we're back focused on this and that won't happen again. These guys work for me and it's not happening.
So the, the. Velocity meters that you use, um, are those calibrated? Daily, never, they come new and they say that they'll measure down to a certain, uh, measurement or. Uh, they get dropped out of the back of the four-wheeler or the technician before he's going to place it, drops it, is that same thing used or it has to go through a calibration process or?
Yeah, there, there is like a calibration process, so, so before they operate, they'll go on a, a road that's expected to be, so a gravel road. And we're expected to be operating gravel roads, they'll do what is called a PPV walkaway test. So they'll have the truck here and then they'll measure increments of five or ten feet from it. And they'll just have the truck move along and they'll measure that footage, and so it creates a graph of saying, okay, at five feet, it's this number, at ten feet, it's this number, at twenty feet, it's this number. That should be a relative, you know, measurement for that road we're operating on. And then in addition to that, we'll be operating, we'll be, we'll have the PPV equipment at different infrastructure points too. So it gives us a good sense of when we get close to point five. So we just have that already running and then we'll also be measuring different infrastructure along the way.
Were you asking about the nodes that they're putting in the ground?
Yeah.
The, the testing equipment to, that is out in front, making sure that a structure is not getting above the point five PPV. Because the nodes, the nodes aren't going to give us a measurement, we, we, we want the, the testing equipment. That is that guy out in front of this, um, vehicle showing as they get closer. What the value is as they get closer to one of our structures, right? The, if that's the question, that's a great question on when is that calibrated, how often is that calibrated? To make sure that that is staying within a certain tolerance, so make sure that we're not hitting that point by PPV.
That's my mess.
Yeah, so your asking is the point five PB an accurate measure?
Yes.
Yeah, so there's a calibration process, we'd have to go back to the guys that run that machine and send that to you, but I know that there's a calibration process, I don't know exactly how often they do it. But, um, it's important for them and I, and my understanding in the past is that they take a specific point. They do, uh, an initial, uh, evaluation of that point and they come back to that point and see if the calibration is consistent to that point. That's, that's kind of a daily test, but I'll have to get the guy, there's an expert and that's what he does for a living.
Okay.
I'll have to get him to tell you about his process.
Well, I may not understand it, but what you said is what I'm asking.
Yeah, I get it, I, I, I didn't want you to think that the, the, the nodes in the ground were going to give us a reading, those are for them. Those nodes that they're putting out, that's for them, the guy that's sitting in the, the SUV that's out in front.
Yeah.
Of this vehicle, of the, of the tester is the one that we want to make sure his, his equipment is, uh, properly calibrated to read.
Okay.
That.
And that's data we can provide the camera.
And we, we can give you tables of PPV measurements on every shot, yeah.
And, and that, and his name's Mike, that's doing it.
Yeah.
He, um, he is an independent employee, he does not, he is not a Twin Rivers employee.
Or Coloma.
Or Coloma.
Yeah.
He's an independent.
And we look at him as an auditor, you know, he, he is making sure that we stay within the guidelines.
Is there a way to see? His data live?
Like, is any way to transmit?
It's not a wireless device he's using, but, uh, daily though is reasonable.
Yeah, he downloads it every evening, so we could get, we could find a way to get that to you so that you're, you're keeping up.
If you want it live, you literally have to stand over his shoulder.
Really?
Which is fine, you can, you can do that.
We'll find the best way to get as close to near term as we can.
Yeah.
Yeah, it doesn't have internet connection.
But Adam, once you see it like the first week, you'll start to like have a really good feeling.
Understandable.
Of how it's happening, so when you get the data reports.
One of the things that you said was that you only really plan out five days in ahead. Is there a, is, it, I mean, what I, what I wrote down here is, y- you guys have identified these routes on this. And what I would like to see is it segmented off to say, okay, this ten mile segment is segment number one, we're going to be working on this segment from. August fifteenth to August eighteenth.
Sure.
And then have that on a map where it's an, it's not so much an interactive, but if something changes, you can change it on that map and I can see it.
Right.
Well, cause that's what we do.
Yeah, let, let me see if I can get you one of our tablets, that, that might be stepping out to say that, and that tablet shows everything that's going on.
And you can put limited access on it, or we can create a Teams file that you can put that on it, I just want to be able to see, cause what I requested before was a schedule, like. You know, just a, a Gantt schedule of these routes this day, these routes next day, kind of showing your progression through these areas, so that. If, if, if a member of the public or the member of the board comes to me and says, hey, where are they at? I can say, well, they should be right here.
Yeah.
Well, and you can schedule your road graders and your guys because you, we, you know, don't want them grading a road and taking out all your nodes.
Sure.
And that will happen because they get told to do something, they go do it.
You're right, and, and we, I think we still, uh, assuming this permit's approved, we would continue to camp out in the Heartland Museum. So we, we're one block from you, that's essentially our operations center, so we've got maps, we have the, the leads there. And they can get anybody on the phone if we need to do anything, so you, you really would have like a live connection to all of our operations on doing. But the data you just asked for and the, the visuals of how you want it to seem, um, we, since we're here, I mean, we can start to. Draft what that would look like and work with you on what that should look like, so that you are getting that deliverable, uh, and then other engineers.
And, and obviously the closer you are to that date, the more accurate it is, there's weather, like yesterday, we got a few hours to work in because they've been working that kind of weather, so, but, so it'll change.
Well, and, and that's all I'm asking for.
Know is where we're going to be and have, there'll be a long-term plan, like all, all the way through the end of the program, we're going to start this out, we're going to work to the north, five miles a day is what we anticipate getting, that's a regular day. And then we can show you that plan and once things change because of weather, whatever, or a machine goes down for a day, we readjust.
Just those, those days.
Yeah, it's understandable, we can, we can get all that. And give you that as part of the daily report, and you're always welcome to come to a more to me to, I know how the safety meeting goes and what people say about the community, right now, it's been a great, great situation.
Yeah, we haven't had safety, uh, issues, we have, have, you know, people upset with us, so, uh, at least to our faces, so, you know, I think that's been very, very positive.
So.
Hey, guys.
Uh, Ashley?
Before I have to leave, because I need to leave, um, I, Robert Watts, he, um, made a comment. In our chat, he said eleven million insurance is virtually nothing, I personally have two million dollar liability. Just wanted to make you guys aware that there was a, something in the chat. A comment.
Good.
Um, and I do need to leave, um, I will watch this later. Um, and I'll. Call Rick or Dean or Betty or Lynn if I have any questions. Or Adam.
Thank you, Ashley.
Yep, have a good day, guys.
All right, see ya.
So, uh, for the board, we are reversing a previous decision that we had made. I, I mean, obviously we have more information than we had at that time.
When you guys were talking about insurance for Robert's question from that, uh, you have a, a grand total of eleven, is it three or is it five million for Wright County? Uh, that you have named Wright County as insured?
Uh, the, the policies per project, so it, it, it would be the project that covers this county and the other counties.
Yes.
Um, but we've got two projects technically in this area, uh.
So what, I mean, my understanding from, from our earlier conversation about this was is that there was a six million, six million from Coloma. A two million from Twin Rivers, that was an aggregate throughout the entire, with all the counts. And then yesterday you, there was a specific, uh, insurance certificate of liability for Wright County for three. Is that, is that what I understood?
No, we, we, we have a COI, but. No, we, we, we have a C O I that names Wright County. So that policy specifically names this county.
What's a C O I?
So now, so we're saying that there, there is an eleven million dollar.
Aggregate total.
Aggregate total for Wright County specifically.
For the project, which covers Wright County, I mean, majority of Wright County. And or, and if we go into um, Franklin and Webster. It would cover the, the infrastructure in those counties as well, but the majority of the project is in this county.
About three quarters of it is in Wright County. So. That does put us. Higher than, but, and we are named on the certificate of insurance. So, and that is perpetual for five years from now if something happens, right?
In my discussion with the insurance, this is something that's page day. So this is a policy that covers activity from this operation. And in my discussions with Uni-Trends Company, if there's a claim made ten years from now, it's attributable to the operations that occurred. From us, that would be made to this operation.
So the guidance moderator of P P Vs, um, how does he communicate with the operator of the vibrator machine to say, okay, you, you exceeded our limitations?
He is right on the truck.
Yeah, they're right there, but they have radios in the truck, they're asking communication. They tell them when a shot's gonna go on. If he tells them that he's in place on an infrastructure. It's, it's a constant communication that they have.
So the biggest thing we've changed is letting them go on closer to the bridges.
Yeah, we would not, well, was there twenty-five foot that I? Or be.
Uh, the point five feet car for velocity. The two hundred fifty is still in effect for bridges. And vibratory rollers are allowed to operate on these tops, right? Without any type of buffer and they're putting more energy in the ground. So I, I, I think that was our.
So it's the same for the bridges, two fifty, but anything else, twenty-five feet or the point. Five inches seconds.
Yeah, yeah. That's what their request is.
Yeah.
And then there's the other item of the change of item number one, which is permit fee.
Yeah.
That still needs to be discussed.
So if that two hundred thousand dollars covers the entire project and if we have seventy-five percent of the project, when I do the math, that comes out to a hundred and fifty thousand dollars.
I think the conversation we had yesterday, we started with fifty and then we went to eighty and you had said two hundred.
We went from fifty, I said two hundred and then it switched to, to eighty, so.
You know, we, we just need to be sure in all of this that we tie a payment to you to something that's trackable, measurable. You know, that's a, that's a big issue with, with why we're paying these people money and when, but it's based on. And the, the, I think the eighty came from Adam saying there is a.
We have a permit fee.
A permit fee and it's this much per mile and we then came to seventy-five thousand, I think, to calculate. And then we said, how about eight?
And then I went into that I'm gonna default this conversation to you are dealing with.
Right.
Four other people.
Yeah, so fair, fair enough. But that's where that number, that's where the eighty number, didn't come from a few hundred thousand, let's calculate sixty percent.
Correct, no.
Well, and, and this is a, a moving project too. So the, the lot, the math that we come up with today is still a subject to change. Based on our field operating. We may add a road, we may remove a road. So it's kind of hard to have an extremely specific. Uh, metric to target to, but I can tell you that, you know, we, we, the uh, eighty that was discussed yesterday. Is something that we have authority uh, to do today.
And when I read this, it's anywhere in Wright County.
And with approval of their, they have to submit a map. And I can reject that map tomorrow.
Yeah, I mean, if Adam tells us that it's not a good road for you to work on during this time, we'd go someplace else. I mean, we have. I mean, we're, we're trying to create a picture of the subsurface and whether we use this road or road mile to the north. Isn't, isn't hurtful to us, as long as we can sample it in the recent.
Yeah.
C D M. So that, that was flexibility and we'll let Adam guide that.
And the, the twenty-five foot setback. And of, of course, as we all know, a drainage mess, the, the information that we give them is only as good as what we give them. And our, uh, they go off of the beacon and the drainage tiles. And so, and that's why uh, the, the permit fee and, and um, Adam and I talked a little bit, we thought about keeping it. In a, a separate fund and I think we have our drainage administration fund because most of it is for drainage. And because the accuracy on our beacon maps is not exact GPS exactly right here. It can go this way, it can go this way. So holding those dollars um, for any drainage issue that may come about within that area of their GPS. Locations of where they ran the vibrator machine um, will give us a, a little bit of. Comfort that we are protecting the landowners in, in the area as, as the machines go through. And, and like I said, the twenty-five feet, it, it may be that they're within ten feet because the, the location on our. On our mapping system is not exact.
And we never go above point five, no matter where we are in the survey, whether we're two hundred and fifty feet or further from an infrastructure. And those numbers of point five are less than the vibratory roller.
And, and in the case where the tile is parallel with the road, right? We're just on the other side of the road.
So.
And I'll also be, be providing them, any of the work requests that we've gotten in, any of the work orders that we've done. There was, I think on the map, there was sixteen hundred locations of work orders that were, that I've, that I have archived. Um, uh, and then all our pull works, locations. And that's what I did in, for two, two hundred and ten street. Reed and two twenty already.
So. There was, there was what, sixteen hundred?
Sixteen hundred locations. Now, there could be multiple of one location, like there, I, I did bridges, but it could be weed whip or a button. So it could be at the same one, but at least I could say that, hey, there is something there that we know of. That is an intake, anything like that. E- either it's archived or it's current. Um, or it's archived in the work request because we just didn't get, didn't need to get it done, um, or it was a duplicate. So. It actually gets more accurate because we have GPS on those locations.
And all of the locations that Adam gives us, that you give us, unprogrammed into this truck, it will not shoot where we say you can't shoot. If you can't turn the thing on, definitely, it's, it's very well, uh, very well, uh, controlled.
Just a decision.
Right.
But we don't have all the information. I mean, we don't know the claims process for one thing.
And that's why I'm hoping that this, uh, this permit fee that they're talking about, that we're asking for. Uh, can cover if insurance doesn't come through. That we, we have a, a cushion per se. If, if insurance fights us on something that we can at least. Uh, not be using taxpayer dollars to fix something. And that's, you know, our job as not only county supervisors, but also. As uh, drainage trustees, that we have to protect the landowners and their, and their drainage. And uh, make sure that their tax dollars aren't being spent to fix something on a decision that we've made. So I guess.
I'm a lot more comfortable with two hundred thousand and with eight thousand.
Yes, so how about if we split the difference and, and go for a hundred and ten thousand? And as a permit fee, and I make that motion to approve the uh, Wright County Road Use. Um, amendment. And ask for the hundred and ten thousand and uh, allow them to go. Uh, within twenty-five feet of structures except for um, the two hundred fifty feet of actual bridges. And uh, of course, the permit. The, the permit would go through Adam and, and he has the rights, you know, there's not gonna be any blacktops, there's not gonna be any uh, con- concrete. Roads.
So you're not even interested in hearing the claims process?
I think that, that, that's a, a fight to come down the road with, but if we can get the hundred and ten, that will go to a lot of tile repairs.
And who is this insurance company that you would be using?
Uh, Marsh, Marshville Wall. Uh, it's not a firm that you'd be very.
Right. My concern is they're gonna come out and say the drainage tiles aged out beyond its use and we won't pay for it. Now, I, I think Betty's commenting about the hundred and ten thousand dollars would go a long way, but just on the roads of your drainage tile repairs. So hopefully, I don't know what order you'd wanna do it, whether you'd make a claim or you'd use the money. You probably could use the money to fix it and then make a claim, whatever that, however that works, but I hope we can predict how the insurance.
We can't, and I don't, and I think the insurance folks are. Careful about how to describe it, because they, they don't want to in any way. Give an indication that they will approve claims without all of the details. So I, I, my experience with them. I, I don't know if they would provide you, you know, any. Sure, my, uh, if you do this and you get this.
About like yours, it isn't worth a shit.
Well, but it is.
They make it, they put the burden on me.
But it is, it is there though, like it, it does serve a purpose. I just don't think, you know, it, everything, like everything, it has a limit. So I, it, but it is a policy, it is insurance, um, and it, it does have its purpose, its project.
Like, you know, I'm still taking a risk doing this without knowing what the potential benefits are to the county. Economic benefits.
So.
Received.
So right now, Webster County and Humboldt County, um, when they file a lease. When Twin Rivers Exploration files a lease with a landowner, it gets recorded in the recorder's office, post the assessor. The assessor is um, assessing that property on that lease under mineral rights. And it's assessed at like seven hundred and eighty dollars on a forty eight, seven hundred assessed value of seven hundred and eighty dollars. On a forty acre parcel. So if you take approximately uh, twenty-five dollars is the levy rate. Let's say twenty-five dollars levy rate per thousand, a seven hundred and eighty would be what, eighteen dollars? I don't have the exact number and do the math. So, so for each forty acre parcel they're paying. So there's, there's some revenue for every lease that they file. They had, um. Was there like five hundred entries, I think, in Webster County? Um. Maybe, I think, I think there was, you, you looked at.
Uh, when I, when I, when I did the search in Webster County, um, it, it brought up that a five hundred maximum could be shown. So I think you own, I, you have five, over five hundred leases in Webster County. Of parcels.
A lot of people.
Yeah, so I, I couldn't even show how many parcels they had. And an average parcel was about anywhere from probably thirty-six to thirty-nine acres. And they were, uh, Webster County was charging twenty dollars an acre. Um, so each parcel was as for current mineral rights.
And then there's some tax associated with this.
Yeah.
But so if. And that's paid by the landowner or that's paid by the leasing?
Twin Rivers Exploration pays that.
Do you remember our experience with buildings on leased land?
Yeah, they don't pay it.
Right, if they don't pay it, you have no recourse.
Well, you do if we have a producing well. Um, that's, so currently we're being charged for non-production.
Uh, I'm not certain about that. Uh, I'm, I would question that because I know that we've had. A building. Put on leased land. That the person who owned the building did not pay the tax, property taxes on that building. And we had no recourse on that. On that owner of the building. Because it was built on leased land.
And the land had paid their taxes.
That's correct. But Tom, I have your honor right now.
I, so I can tell you we pay our taxes.
And I believe you and I, I get that.
But the, but that, but the benefits though, so that's an example of.
By the way, I do have a motion on the floor.
I know, I haven't forgotten.
Was there a second?
No second, yeah, I don't think, no.
We're still discussing.
Yeah.
Can we discuss without a second?
Um. Not necessarily. I mean.
Your motion will die without a second.
Motion is gonna die without a second unless one of you. Like, is that?
I'll second that.
I mean, I'll continue on. This detail. What was that motion?
You know, your motion, I'll, I'll go back and try to figure something out with. We considered to babble on about something else during the motion, so.
Sorry.
I can restate the motion if you thought.
That'd be great.
I will make a motion to approve the Wright County Road Use Agreement Amendment. And adding a permit fee where the applicant shall submit a permit fee prior to, now I'll give you a copy of this. Uh, commencing operations of one hundred and ten thousand dollars to Wright County. In addition to uh, that the applicant shall not perform any seismic testing within two hundred and fifty feet of a bridge. And the applicant shall not perform any seismic testing within twenty-five feet of a roadway structure and shall monitor all roadway structures. And monitor P P V value for that structure shall not go above point five inches per second.
And I will second that.
I've, um, even in regards to your question about B L L, um. Four fifty-eight A eighteen mineral rights tax separately in the Iowa code, the last sentence and, and I'm still trying to go through it, but it does say the taxes. On such rights or interests that are not owned by the owner of the land shall be, shall not be a lien on the land. So. I, it, by that statement, I don't think you can, you, you. I don't think we have a recourse.
That's correct.
But I'm not a lawyer.
Neither am I, but I distinctly remember that issue.
Cause you have uh, trailer houses, like a, a trailer court or a trailer house and then all of a sudden the trailer's gone. And you have no recourse on that because the trailer's gone and how do you get it? So. Um, those are, but that is, that is a, a chance you take. Uh, but at one point.
That affects the county on the property taxes. It's a bigger effect to me on. Uh, well, maybe it isn't on the person who signs the lease on their land, but, but we should be. Cognizant of that issue as.
Yeah.
As we move forward with this.
Correct. Uh, another positive can be that, um. Kyle had brought up a, a severance tax, right? Iowa does not have a severance tax law. And um, my intention is to bring this up to legislation. Um, I'll, I'll get a copy of the Texas law, I'll get a copy of the Colorado law. See, they are similar to each other or not. And bring that to legislation. So if this does move forward and they're, they find hydrogen and they do dig a well and it becomes a, a project. Commercial, uh, it could uh, bring in some monies. Um, and it's anywhere from what, three percent to seven percent? What was that again?
Seven percent was the average in Texas, this is what they had brought up. So average.
Well, yeah.
That means there's higher and lower.
Yes. Um, and that is on, and, and it, it's variable because it goes on sales. And so that could be a, a revenue source and I'm, I guess I don't know for sure if that comes directly back to. The county or does it go to the state that, those dollars? Yeah, you're gonna be careful now. The county or does it go to the state that those dollars, yeah, you're gonna be careful now.
Well, I could read, it it, the state also has a piece of it as well, so.
So.
Yeah, it's more focused on the administrative burden of these operations and counties and state, sure that they're not. Um, you know, I think there's a cost without any benefit. And then the other benefit are to landowners, right, I mean, without this geophysical operation, we're not able to lease, so we're not able to pay. All this money to landowners for leasing their property to us. And then down the road, not able to receive royalties based off of the production that we're in the farm. We're one of the few hydrogen exploration companies in the world, um, uh, we're very unique in that capacity, so. If we're unable to move forward exploring this area, that there. It may be years, uh, or maybe never, uh, for someone to come here and explore for you, yeah. Um, so I think that's.
It passes to the new owner, yeah.
Does it directly affect the county or does it directly affect this community and people's income?
Is this something do where you have, uh, other places that actually produce in the country?
In the US, it's not commercially produced, this is a pure exploratory exercise.
We have demonstrated that geologic hydrogen, the the rocks produce hydrogen, it's apparently simply because we've seen. Percentages up over ninety percent of produced gas and some wells here in Iowa. What what we're looking for is that gas to be containerized, including to a structure, that's the thing we have not done yet. Ever since the first time in the US, we're actually gonna do this exploration to the scale, we can find this structure. This is as good a place as any place in the US we've seen as far as the geology and the prospectivity we have around, that's why we're here.
And so from a development. Standpoint, if in fact that is true, then, uh. Then we could see an economic impact by. The use or the building of a plant facility, uh. In order to harvest this gas in in bringing out creation.
Absolutely. And then that next step, if there is production, would be a a discussion with the community, how do you want this, what do you want this to look like?
I- i- if you find a uh, a source. How long do you, I mean, this is the red book, obviously, um, would you estimate that source to last? Is there a, hey, this is gonna be here, commercial producing for the next hundred years, or there are natural gas wells in Texas that produce for over a hundred years?
Okay, and the and the other thing.
Gas, as in hydrogen, Africa?
No, but but, you know, a a geologically produced gas, you know.
And and there's something unique about hydrogen is that, so natural gas, the production of that from from kerogen in the subsurfaces. Is tens of millions of years ago. Natural gas, we can take the rocks from wells and in our lab in Ohio, and we can produce hydrogen from those rocks today. There are theories that that hydrogen production is an ongoing process, does the rate of production in the subsurface? Keep pace with the with the. Extraction is something to balance once you get there and figure out the optimal way to monetize it. But that's that's what's different about oil and gas and hydrogen, we can produce hydrogen from the right chemistry and the right. P H of water with the rocks that you have right here. Wright County and and other and some other places in Iowa, that, you know, there's some other counties, but Wright County is as good a place.
Just don't wanna build, build, build housing and everything, and then all of a sudden it goes away and you have a ghost town.
The, so, energy projects are very long-term projects, so, so, I mean, we've been here for three years and they put three holes in the ground. I mean, it it's just a very long-term process, so even if we had a discovery. You'd have to drill wells, you'd have to find investors, you'd have to think about capital, so you're talking about, you know, years and years of. Just trying to get the capital in place, even think about building infrastructure and other projects, and so it's not like. There's a discovery and then tomorrow there's an Amazon warehouse or something, like it's, this is a very long-term project.
We take the Amazon warehouse, by the way, we'll take that.
They want clean energy, they don't fuel something like that, and so, and the hydrogen is not easy to transport. And so that means the cheapest, most economic way to use it is to bring industry here. Was it, you can't send it other places, but that would encourage folks to actually go out here, this does not. This is not commercially produced in the US, so you would be very unique in that capacity if it's simple to be discovered here.
And our commercial guys talk about ammonia facilities and hydrogen being critical to that, they talk about electrical generated facilities. You'd stick right on top of the well and have, you know, a great source of electricity, or they, depending on the scale, something like this, I mean, Amazon. Is a is a close watcher of our activity because they are ready to jump on one of those facilities, that would be such a little. And these AI data centers too is another one of the people that come after us all the time, saying if you find hydrogen, you. We will buy every bit of the AI data computing center, as it uses so much electricity.
You don't have to have one, you know.
Yeah, but that's your your call, you don't have to have Amazon in your backyard.
Call for the question?
Anymore? Adam, how are you feeling?
Like I said last week, I'm still at the two fifty, but with the idea that there is a monetary amount. That makes your ability to to look at and our ability to look at citizens in Wright County and say. We made sure that you're protected. That's, that's where I'm going with this, and 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 the idea of that. I don't want us, I don't want Wright County to miss out on something that could be beneficial by any means. But I wanna make sure that the citizens are protected, and then I said this yesterday in our in our meeting, a a a tile. Uh, fix for us on average has been about twenty five hundred bucks for the last three years. So per tile location that we fixed, because we keep track of that cost, so. Doing that, if if that's the only thing that's broken, we can do a lot of tile fixes with whatever money you guys come up with, with whatever they. Uh, is okay, right, based on that. But a smaller portion of that could be, is is the tile, if something gets drowned out in in a in a pharmacy.
So when we visited with Agrovia or whatever, are we gonna continue with that process?
Not at this time. So, but that's, that's my stance on it, I'm not trying to, I'm just making sure that. The information that is being provided and that we are protecting the citizens.
So you're concerned about the the tile itself and not the loss of crop for the farmer?
I'm both, the the tile, the tile portion of that is a smaller portion, I think. So that's why I think that there the the insurance a- and the the monetary permit fee, if we choose to put that somewhere else. And use that for that is good, since we are protecting, we are, we are making the decision that we need extra funds. To make sure we're protecting the farmers.
So yesterday, um, I got a hold of, um, Randolph County, Indiana. And, um, Kyle Handy gave me the name of a Tom, Tom. Talpent, is that his name? Um, anyway, uh, and Tom was a commissioner back in twenty twenty. Um, and, uh, which was the county supervisor, and he was on the. Kind of main contact for the seismic testing, and then they also did three D seismic at that time, and, um. They were not doing it for hydrogen, but they were doing it for uh, carbon sequestration work. And, um, and trying to see, they have an ethanol plant and they were trying to do it, look close by there. He, uh. I asked him questions about the seismic testing, was there any issues where, do they have any problems, do they have anything come up, and he said no. However, um, with those discussions, he also knew everything about what was going on here in Wright County and with. Uh, the the look for hydrogen, and so I didn't have that warm fuzzy feeling because. I felt like he was already, uh, I think it's Robert Field. The one that was the one that contacted, I felt like the Robert had already given the heads up on everything, so with that being said.
Yeah, he he's called this guy to say, this is what we're doing, would you talk to these people, you know, what's what Robert did, to give the guy some context on why somebody was gonna call him.
Right, so so then I talked to, uh, the president of the commission of Randolph County, who was the. He'd be president of the commission, would be chairman of the board of supervisors, uh, Gary Friend, and I I spoke to him. For quite a while yesterday, that was just a cold call, they did not know that I was calling, and Tom. Is no longer commissioner, they have term limits, two year, uh, two term limits, which is eight years, and then they have to go off. So a- and Gary was very open about the seismic testing, I said, you know, over the. They do have drainage there, they do have drainage tile, not as extensive as as probably what I, Wright County is. And, um, and but he, he said that the citizens, he did not hear any complaints from the citizens. And, um, and did not have any issues arise with with the seismic testing. I did forget to ask if they did it in the fields or if they did it on the roads, I did.
For three D, they would have to do.
But the source spacing is gonna be a patchwork on the surface.
Imagine these lines, but closer and grid across farms. That's how, that's how three D, it's the same process, but just a tighter.
Tighter source space, that ninety foot would not only be in line on the roads, but it would be crosswise across fields.
So, so that's the the phone calls and the people that I talked to.
That's the same operator that we're using for this area with the same.
Well, I don't know, because I think the equipment was bigger in Randolph than it is. I believe it's what Tom said.
If that's true, then they were twice the size of the vibrators. Sixty four thousand pounds.
Did the city of Belmont give you guys to go ahead?
They did yesterday, yeah, yeah, so we'll be in Belmont, um, this weekend or early next week, probably, yeah.
Okay, we have a motion, a second or four? Do I need to do roll call?
No, this is not resolution.
All in favor?
Aye.
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 Any opposed? Passes, three ayes and one opposed, and one not present.
I will go and get a hundred and ten.
That's the next question, I was gonna add.
I didn't know if you needed a step way to do that, like.
If I make the call, don't do it.
I should have let you go do that before we.
I'll make it up.
We really appreciate you for.
That's right, thank you. I am not gonna be here next week, so, but I can send Jeremy, um, and I'll, uh.
I think we need.
I'll send you an email because I've been writing down notes of what I think, what I need to know and what I want to see, um. I think the map development, the idea of what routes you're using and why, and if I say no to that. What it affects. Okay, or or, because it looks to me like you're trying to stay on north-south roads, like you don't go around curves very well.
Yeah, we, if 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 there's a curve in the road, just like you saw with highway three going at sixty yard, we would prefer to extend it and have, because the. The, if you think about an eleven thousand foot array, once you start to curve that line, then it's just a massive spread of where the imaging is. As opposed to. You want, well, you want section view rather than a.
I'd just like to comment that I'm not totally against this operation, I just don't feel I have all the information I need yet.
What, can we help you? How can we do that?
I I'll visit with you.
Okay, yeah, whatever questions you have, yeah, I know there are lots of questions, we're we're amped in the heart of the exhibit still. And, uh, but Lynn, but we want to answer your questions, yeah, and I know we did hear from Ashley, she has questions too, you would be happy to answer that. Uh, we want to be part of, you know, a a helpful source to the community of what we're doing. Um, so if there's, yeah, if you guys have any questions, and we we do demos regularly too. Uh, we did buy a vibratory roller, it's sitting on our website right now, and just in case you guys wanted to come.
We just needed to know. Gonna just base it on, uh, some stats.
I went out with Adam the last week. When you were doing highway three. And we were across the road from it. Got very little vibration on my feet.
Kind of when it starts, and then after that.
Yeah, it dissipates.
So it's interesting, if you stand next to the vibratory roller, you'll that similar early vibration. But it just kind of stays, yes.
Jiving by them fiber rollers, that's way more than what you guys are doing.
It it really, you can, I'm I'm trying to say, as the reason we bought it, I was kind of excited, you guys could stand next to it and. Literally just feel the energy, um.
Send your thing with this.
Okay.
Your sign.
Let's do it, Jerry.
Thank you.
Second.
All in favor? All ayes, thank you.